I know it's so annoying.
Welcome to nice meeting to order if you guys will join me in saying the pledge allegiance.
Jamie will be here my understanding is.
Yes, he's on his way.
Clark. John President Jason. Alicia.
Here.
Donna.
Thank you, John. I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I have a motion by Clark. Do I have a second? Was that you, John? Okay, I have a motion by Clark, a second by John to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed same sign. Agenda is approved. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next school, regular school board meeting will be on Monday, January 13th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the GSL High School Community Room 443-444. Any acknowledgements?
I do have a couple, here we go. I do have a couple of acknowledgements, but I, if you don't mind, I'm gonna wait till the end of our meeting.
Okay, then we will move on to public input relating to the agenda. So first call for public input relating to the agenda. And second call for public input relating to the agenda. And final third call for public input relating to the agenda. Okay, hearing none. Reports and presentations, we do not have any at this time for tonight, so we'll move on to administrators and committee reports. And business manager Sanders, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you. So I just have a couple of things. Most of my information will come later during the agenda and the truth in taxation. We did meet as a facility committee last week with Jamie and Jason, went through a lot of projects that we've now completed. Updated them on that and then some projects that we have scheduled to be completed and then things we are looking at for next summer and trying to get bids on. So the, the three that we've already locked in is we're gonna be doing some updating in the fieldhouse, the weight room area. Mr. Munchaus is gonna be putting in new flooring. He's got some new weights coming in. And that isn't part of our LTFM budget, but it is coming out of Fund IV, so he's covering the cost of what we're gonna be doing there. So that's gonna be exciting to have those couple rooms taken care of. And then probably right away in June, we're gonna be painting the upper level of the fieldhouse. That's been locked in. Last summer, we did the lower level. And now we're gonna do the upper level, so that'll be nice to get that freshened up. We've also scheduled the tennis court resurfacing and that, we're on their schedule to have done as soon as the weather allows in the spring, so hopefully April, May, we'll see how much snow we have on those courts. And then a couple of things we're already lined up for the summer, possibly a little sooner, is the cafeteria windows of the Lakeside Building. Those windows are in rough, tough shape, so they're gonna be replaced. We're also looking to replace the fieldhouse walking track with a new sport court surface on that area. Continuing with our hot water lines at the high school. And then we're gonna start getting some prices to look at Lakeside. We've been slowly replacing classroom ceiling lights and tiles. And we're gonna start looking at the hallways up there. We feel that's the next step that we need to take. And then we're also gonna start looking at our swim locker rooms. We've kind of been trying to do each restroom every year. And we're kind of down now to wanting to switch to those swim locker rooms next. They're in, in need of getting some updated, so we're gonna look at pricing on that. Couple other things that are just falling under regular maintenance. We have to do some valves on an air handler unit. The fuse panel at Lakeside will get taken care of, hoping over Christmas break. We've got some new cabinets coming for the egg room. And we had a bleacher inspection done, both on the outside bleachers, the staining bleachers on both sides, along with both gyms here, the purple gym and the black gym. All, just a couple minor little things, some loose anchors. In the purple gym, we do have some weak motors in there, so we'll probably start getting some pricing on replacing those motors as well. So along with that, that was the facilities unless Jason's got something to add on that, he can jump in. Working on the revised budget, watching closely what's happening with our compensatory funding for '25-'26. We know that's probably gonna drop a little bit, so we have to see where that falls into our plan for '25-'26. Our cabinet team has already been starting to look at options for our '25-'26 staffing and what we might need to make changes to, so we'll be working on that heavily the next couple months. And also the pay equity report, I just found out is due by January 31st. So one more thing that has to be taken care of. So that's what I have for tonight. Any questions? One more thing somebody has to do. Somebody.
It's be done before January 17th.
We'll see.
Any questions for Michelle? Alright, thank you. Principal's reports. Bill, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you and good afternoon, everyone. I'll highlight some of the items on our elementary report. You'll see near the top that we had a letters live session on November 27th. And one of the enclosures I included for you is similar to an exercise that the instructor took us through, and it's about reading accuracy. I found it, you know, very thought provoking and interesting. And you can see the front is, if you were reading that passage at 80% accuracy. And really, I can't make any sense of that. And then if you turn on the back, it is the entire passage. So it was, he, he took us through that after a break and it was just a good lesson as, as he led us through that session. I'll look down, probably two thirds of the way down. Our K-6 science team will meet next week on the 16th. And I want to thank Alicia for the title numbers down there, or Tricia for the title numbers. We have a little, little different information there. We pulled out what is going to our non-public partner First Lutheran. So I thought that would be interesting for, for all of us here. The parentheses amount is the budgeted numbers from last year. And then you can see we have a non-public share for Title I and Title II. Again, Title IV, we transferred all to Title III, which helps support our English learners up at Lakeside. You look on the back, you can see, you know, a lot of the events and community partnership events that are happening there. I'll highlight, you know, a few. Chess Club was, was just finishing this afternoon before the board meeting. You've got a picture of one of our, our families at kindergarten gingerbread houses. And we had the food drive, the toy drive, and I will finish by acknowledging Sarah Lipke and the Lakeside Student Council for their efforts with, with the toy drive. What, what questions do you have?
I just have one comment. I was at the community schools back here in, what was it, LaSara, what was it, in November? You had your student council down? I thought, I really appreciated that. I thought that was pretty cool and the kids were phenomenal. And so thank you for taking the time to bring them down and having us have an opportunity to meet them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Matt?
I'm gonna talk just briefly here tonight about some of the, the happenings that are going on at the junior high, senior high. One of the, the bigger things that we've talked about for a couple of months at our level and actually pre-K through six, or pre-K through 12, but Character Strong Curriculum is something that we have purchased, which is a social emotional learning curriculum. This is something that at the junior high, senior high level, we will start implementing in January when we come back from break. Sarah Blazinski, who is our SEL Coordinator for the district, has been pretty instrumental in identifying what was gonna work best, providing us some training. There was last week, a PD, two hour PD session that was synchronous and live that went very, very well at our level. And excited to get that started here in January when we come back. On the PBIS front, which is gonna kind of at our level meld over the next year with, with curriculum or Character Strong and Social Emotional Learning. But we're still doing our Student of the Month Award Breakfast. That's changed a little bit in the seven years that I've been here. We've settled on morning breakfast where the staff and the parents come in with the student. And here, kind of all the great things that, that have happened with, with their children and why they were selected. I do want to say special thanks to Nick at Bumps. He has been helpful this year in bringing and providing breakfast for our, our recipients and their parents on those days. Want to talk a little bit about what our solution focus team or SFT team does at the 712 level. And it's a bit of a process that I'm gonna cover very quickly here. But I do talk at staff meetings and with my staff about what, what this has when questions come up. But we have grade level PLCs twice a month. With our grade level PLCs, there's a Google form that goes out that all staff have access to. And they can submit any, any behavior, academic concerns that they may have with students in their classroom. Those grade level concerns are discussed at grade level PLCs. And then if they're not vetted out through contacts home with teachers, counselors, or administration, we bring them to SFT. Where we talk about the, the student more in depth of, okay, do they have a diagnosis? If they do have a diagnosis, do they have a 504? If they don't have a 504, but they do have a diagnosis, is this something that we can talk about and maybe implement and create a 504? And then identify interventions from there. If those behavior or academic concerns aren't alleviated through that process with interventions or a 504, then we do start talking about the child find process through special education. In order to go through the special education evaluation process, there has to be a set amount of intervention in place first. So that's a super quick overview of what we have at SFT and what our SFT does at the 712 level. And then to kind of give you just a little bit of an idea on, not all of the things, but some of the things that we have at our disposal to help students who are struggling. At the junior high level, we have a halftime title teacher where we can have him do some math or reading interventions. We do have an ICU professional at our junior high that works with students that need help with organization or executive functioning skills. At the senior high level, we do have a structured study hall individual. Many of our ICU students move over to structured study hall when they get to the high school level. And then I have talked at the board level and I'll talk more, more extensively in January when, when this process opens, but applying for some AdSIS dollars at the senior high level to add an interventionist next year. But that process doesn't start until January and I'll talk more about it next month. Want to talk very briefly, and this is shocking to me already, but we have our '25-'26 registration process. We've started the conversations of that already today. Meetings with our counselors are scheduled with students at the end of January where they'll talk about what this registration process looks like for them. We are gonna be offering a parent course fair again, where parents can come in and hear about the elective options at the senior high level. So if their student, you know, I'm a parent myself, and when I ask my kid and they come home, how was school today? Good. What'd you do? Stuff. You know, this, this provides a little bit more in-depth conversation with parents of what are the electives that we offer? What are the courses we offer at the, at the senior high level? And what can your kids sign up for during the registration process? So the parent course fair is set for January 13th, which is a progress night, so we're gonna be inviting families into the building anyways during that day. And then the students will have access to go through that same course fair, the 14th through the 17th, which is that Tuesday through Friday of that week. School community partnership, I want to thank Brittany Schmidt for heading this program, but we did again supply family meals for Thanksgiving. And are supplying family gifts for Christmas. Brittany Schmidt is the one that did head this up, but I do want to have a special thanks to area businesses that donated. Chart Wells, who are the ones that created the oven-ready meals for families for Thanksgiving. And then the GSL staff were purchasing and donating the gifts that will be given out for Christmas. And then lastly, and I don't want to take a lot away because I know Chris is probably gonna talk about it, but I want to thank Donna and Clark. They have been a part of this process for me since I have been at GSL. And you guys have meant a lot to me through this process. So thank you for everything that you've done here at school. Thank you for the things you've done for me. And best of luck as you move on from school board members. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Superintendent report?
Thank you and good evening. Just a few things. My next community schools meeting will be on December 20th, and this is the one where we have people come into our school, will work with the 9th through 12th graders. And they will have career conversations where they're going to be going into rooms, talking about their careers. Where kids get an opportunity to sign up. This year, it's gonna be unique. There'll be about 15 or so, give or take. I'm still working on my finalized list. But all the people that are gonna be there are gonna be graduates from GSL, or Silver Lake, or Brownton, or Glencoe, when it was Glencoe. And so it's, the whole idea is to kind of show that here are some successful people that, that came from the walls of, of our schools in our district. So that'll be taking place on December 20th. Moving ahead, the next community schools meeting will be on January 9th, and that's the one where we do our career conversations where we get about over 100 people in the library. And that's one of the popular events. And we work with McLeod for Tomorrow on that day with, with people coming in. So those are the next couple of things that are happening with GSL community schools. LCTN, I still don't have any update on what's happening there. We really thinking that we were gonna be into mediation on this month. But it looks like it's gonna be happening sometime next year, January, February of those types. So hopefully we'll, we'll give you an update on where things are at. A reminder, and I will send this out to families, looking for, at, at the, this next year, we're gonna have those half days. And so it's always important for families, if you remember, we changed our calendar last year due to the REED Act. So January 8th will be our first half day. And then February 5th, April 2nd, and then May 7th. So there's gonna be four half days that we'll be having. And those are gonna be scheduled for our, our staff to go through the REED Act. And so I'll certainly remind families about that calendar change. But hopefully they can plan and do that. School board members, looking forward to MSBA. The, the conference will be on January 16th and 17th. And so if you're interested in going, give myself or Tricia an email. And, and if you can make it, great. Even if you think you can make it, and who knows what will happen. Let's reg, we can get you registered for that, so that, that's basically what we have to do. It's free. So if something comes up, you know, we're not out any dollars, but it's a good opportunity. I do plan on going both days this year, and if you can make both days, that's great. If you can make just one. But you guys have gotta fly. Did you guys get that pamphlet? Okay, and the, the, the speakers for this year are gonna be really good. And we're actually working really hard to see if we can get Mr. Brewer coming to GSL. We're, we're working on it, but he's gonna be the speaker for MSBA on the second day. So I really want to go check that out. So if you're interested, let me know, and, and then we'll go from there. Just a, a quick shout out to all of our music people. It's concert season, obviously another concert tonight. I think the choir concert will, will be happening next week. And then the band concert was the, the Monday before Thanksgiving. And, and once again, all of our concerts are, are well attended and done a great job. And then finally, I want to say thank you to Seneca Foods. I don't know if I've said thank you to them before, but they helped donate. We've worked with them in the summer to help them, for them to utilize our facilities, so that they can go through some training. It's kind of a part of a partnership with community schools a little bit. And they gave us a donation. And what I've done with that donation is that I've reached out to kids and kids have sent me emails if they want to get a book. And then they send me the name of the author, name of the book, and then we go through the process at the district office to getting those books. And I can't even remember how many books that we've been giving out, but they have to do that step in order to get it. And, and we're just gonna keep going until the, the money runs out. But it's really fun when those kids send me an email. And so I do get several emails a week. And those kids will send me an email, "Hey, Mr. Sanju, can I get this book by this author?" And, you know, I kind of always leave myself an out with, "I'll see what I can do." And, but then when I deliver the book, it's, it's kind of a fun moment to, to get the books, because the kids are really, really excited about getting a true book that they have to read or they get to read. So it's kind of fun. So thank you to Seneca Foods for, for helping us out with that. So, any questions for me?
Thank you, Chris. Any committee reports tonight? No? Okay. I will request a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. And to note, we also have an addendum. The motion by John, do I have a second? And a second by Donna to approve the consent agenda and the addendum. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed same sign. The consent agenda and the addendum are approved. Old business, there's none. New business, action item A. Donations received. This is information only. The following donations are, were accepted with appreciation. Again, a lengthy list of contributions from the community organizations for different things within our district. So thank you to those organizations. It's greatly appreciated. And then action item B, resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds. We have, before we get into that, we have Ailer's here tonight. He's going to discuss the pre-sale report for us, and then we'll go into adopting the resolution.
Alright. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. And we're gonna talk a little bit about your bond sale. Is this on? Is this better? Okay. Alright. So you have a resolution in front of you tonight. And that resolution is to authorize the sale or the issuance of your school building bonds. The amount is $10,900,000, and that was authorized through the November election that passed. So the purpose, of course, are the, the projects that you identified during the election process, the ROFs. And we will be issuing those, a term is a 20-year term on those bonds. And we will obtain a rating for that bond also. That's processed. We have that scheduled. And it'll carry two ratings. One is going to be your individual rating, and one is going to be the rating of the state credit enhanced program. And that's where the state would step in if there's any default. So that helps with your interest rates. It actually lowers it because you have the state backing those. So, oh, by the way, you do have a pre-sale report in front of you. And I'm just highlighting a few little sections out of this as I go through this. The way we sell the bonds, it's going to be a competitive bid process nationwide. We would expect to get somewhere minimally six bids. Lately, we've been seeing 10, roughly 10, sometimes 12 bids from national firms. And when, when we were leading up to this, if you remember, I was here several months ago, and we had the possibility of doing a refunding at the same time. We removed that because rates popped up a little bit. Those bonds, those are your 2015 A-bonds, school building bonds, they have, they were sold at very low rates. So we need to see the rates come down a little bit before we move ahead with that. So we separated that from this particular bond, which is what we call new money bond, money for your construction project. You have 20 years left on that other bond, so you can refund those anytime after February 1. So we'll continue to monitor it, and at some point in the future, hopefully we'll be standing here saying it's time to save some money. So the timeline for this is, well, tonight you're authorizing us to move ahead with the bond issuance. In the meantime, we'll be putting together the official statement that has all the information that the investors want to see. We'll be doing a rating call, obtaining the rating, and then on January 13th, the morning of, we will take bids. That evening, you have a board meeting. We will bring the results of the bids here, and you will pass a resolution that awards the sale of those bonds. And then on February 6th, those bonds will be closed, which basically means that's when the money is transferred to your account and becomes available to spend. Now, we would anticipate receiving net premium on that. We discussed, I believe, what a premium was last time. But any net premium is going to go into the construction fund, so it's going to increase to some degree the amount of money that you have for the project. So if you have any contingencies you run into, that'll help. We are anticipating a rate of about 4.35 prior to the election. Of course, there's a lot of time between that and when we sold it. So we had some cushion built in at around 5%. In reality, there's still a little bit of cushion in that 4.35 that I used. If we sold today, we'd be closer to 4%. We're anticipating about $750,000 less in interest over the whole term of the bonds. The reality is, how does that affect the tax impacts that we gave you? I, I gave you an update chart, but it's only about 3, 3 to 5% less at this point. And the reality is, we won't know the exact extent until we actually sell the bonds, but that's what we're anticipating. Slightly less tax impact, certainly, which is all, you know, our, our goal is to come in at or below what we told the public. So in, in your pack, you do have a chart. Mine's black and white, yours is colored. But you can see you have through 2044, tax payable 2044, the blue bars, that's your existing debt. This is on page nine of that. We take the debt, we convert it to the tax rate, that's what's plotted here. And you can see that that goes through 2044 fairly stable. And then on top of it is your new bonds, that would be the orange bars. And we set it up so it would end at the very same time that your old bonds do. And it would be a very level tax rate over those 20 years. So you have a resolution in front of you, and you'll take a roll call on that. Any questions for me?
2044 will be a, a good year.
There'll be new projects.
Any questions for Jeff?
Thanks, Jeff, for all the information. It's, you know, we did it 10 years ago, but it seems like it's all new again, so it helps to walk through it and have you here. So we really appreciate you explaining it. we really appreciate you explaining it and being available to answer our questions, my questions, and work through it to make sure the bond numbers got on the levy sheets correctly. So I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. Pleasure to work with you folks.
Okay. Yes, thank you for being here tonight and explaining. Okay?
See you in January with good rates.
I'll be back.
Okay. Action item B, resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds. Superintendent Sanju recommends adopting the resolution, stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation school building bonds, series 2025A, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $10,900,000, and taking other actions with respect thereto. Do I have a motion?
So?
I have a motion by Clark and a second by Jamie. To adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds. John, can you assist with taking a roll call?
Yes. Please signify for or against, please. Jason?
For.
Jamie?
For.
Clark?
For.
Donna?
For.
Alicia?
For.
John, myself, four.
Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to action item C. Grounds Agreement with 4.0 Services. Business Manager Sanders and Superintendent Sanju, along with the Facility Committee of Oslaven and Lindeman, have reached an agreement with 4.0 Services for the renewal of a three-year grounds management services agreement. The contract is effective April 1 of 2025 to November 15 of 2027. The new contract represents a total three-year increase of 13.5%. Year one will be 13.5% and 0% in years two and three. Total contract amount is $103,649 per year. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll ask for a motion. Or, Chris, did you have?
I was just going to say, these are the same groups that we've worked with for several years. And the extensiveness of the actual contract, it's more than just, and we've talked about this, but it's just a good reminder. You know, they do our striping, they work with sprinklers, they work with fertilizers. They're more than just mowing. And so when you see this, know that there's more to it than, you know, just kind of mowing the grass, so to speak. And they've done a really good job for us, and I recommend that we pass this.
I'll just add one other additional component. By front-loading the contract with 13.5% in year one, and then 0% and 0% in two and three, there was a savings to the district by doing it that way.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. Okay, I'll ask for a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jamie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Jason. To approve the agreement with 4.0 Services for grounds management services from April 1, 2025 through November 15, 2027. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Achievement and Integration Coordinator Contract. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving a one-year contract with Dan Savoda, Achievement and Integration Coordinator, from July 1, 2025 through June 30 of 2026. This position is directly connected and funded with the Achievement and Integration Plan through MDE. Do I have a motion?
So?
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Clark. Sorry, any questions or comments before we vote?
Well, I was going to comment. Mr. Savoda wants to be here. He's going to try to make it yet tonight, because we're going to talk about this in a little more detail at the Truth and Taxation Session. We wanted him to be able to explain some of more of the things he's been working on with this program. Again, it's a one-year program.
One year left of the program.
One year left on this program. So we wanted to, him to be able to talk, but he's with driving FFA kids, so he said he might be back. But this, this will come up, like I say, because we always talk about, do we want a levy for our levy authority in this program, or just take the state in it? So I thought it'd be helpful if he'd be able to explain a little bit more. So if he makes it back, we'll let him jump in later and talk.
His contract, you know, is funded through this program as well. And details about his contract, the dollars don't change at all from the last couple of years. It's all stayed, they stayed the same. Everything is basically status quo. But we get, we put six less days of work. So it helps with the budget, and then it helps with his time. And so that's kind of how we managed with this contract. So if you're saying, what's changed with the contract, that's what's changed with it. And those days, I think he's got like 176 now, where, you know, primarily, he's working with kids. So we said 172 days. Of course, there could be a vacation here or there, that type of stuff. But wanting those to be primarily the same days that the kids are here.
I have a motion by John and a second by Clark to approve the one-year contract with Dan Savoda, Achievement and Integration Coordinator Contract from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item E, first reading of policies. It is the recommendation of Policy Committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting. Policy 212, School Board Member Development; 213, School Board Committees; 214, Out-of-State Travel by School Board Members; 402, Disability Nondiscrimination Policy; 415, Mandated Reporting of Meltreatment of Vulnerable Adults; 498, Political Campaigns and Activities; 524.1, Bring Your Own Device Policy; 529, Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students; 607.1, Early Entrance into Kindergarten; and 630, Telemedicine. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Jason? I have a motion by myself and a second by Jason to bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item F, second reading of policies. The following policies receive their first reading at the November 12 school board meeting. It is the recommendation of the Policy Committee, Directors Lemke and Lechart, and the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the policies as listed below. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
I have a motion by Donna. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Clark to adopt the policies listed above. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item G, miscellaneous. We don't have any miscellaneous at this time. So we'll do action item H. We will recess for Truth and Taxation Hearing. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
I have a motion by Donna. Do I have a second? And a second by Jamie. To recess at 5:38 PM for the Truth and Taxation Hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we're recess-
As I said, I don't want to break the rule at my last Truth and Taxation meeting, so we better make sure we don't start before 6 o'clock. So we're going to get started with Truth and Taxation, our annual meeting that we have to hold for the public. It's open to the public, and it's always advertised that way. So we're going to kind of go through this. Thanks, Rich, for always supporting us, supporting the school. We appreciate that. So what we're going to cover tonight is a little bit of background on school funding, our tax levies, our budgets, information on the proposed levy for 2025, and some information on our school district budget. And then we take comments at the end, or if you have a question, ask the question at any time that works for you. So most of this is the same as we've talked about for the last quite a few years, but I do it as a refresher, because you guys really only hear it once a year. It's something in our office that we deal with all the time. So our discussion tonight has to do with the school district levy for taxes payable in 2025, but the levy sheets, and I do have an extra copy of the whole document if somebody wants that to look at. It is 39 pages this year. I think they lost a page. So the levy document is actually called 2024 Payable in 2025, which means the school board is approving the levy in 2024, which we're in. It's for taxes payable in the calendar year of 2025, and it's revenue for the school district, for our budget in '25, '26. So that's always a little bit confusing, and we are different than cities and counties. Cities and counties now are approving their levies in December. They're also approving their budgets for the calendar year because they run a little different. So for us, we have that six-month lag. We don't, as a board, approve the budget for the next school year until June. That's when we do it. But this gives us our first basis for setting our revenue budget for '25, '26. So we know what the levy numbers are for that next fiscal year. So the first thing I like to talk about is that the tax statement that you get as a property owner, if you own property, you get that in the mail. It usually has to come out by about mid-November. The county sends them out. And I like to review this just to make you more informed as a property owner, as a taxpayer, so that you can understand it. And hopefully, after all these years by now, you've taken some of that advice and looked closely at your tax statement. So the things that are on your proposed taxes is always on the upper right-hand corner. And this could look a little different if you're in a different county, because some counties do use a different format. But on the top, it's going to tell you what kind of value you have on your property. It's going to show you the current year and the proposed property values for the 2025 year. If you have a homestead exclusion on there, you're going to see that. What your homestead exclusion is. If you have ag land, you're going to see that ag credit that shows up in the next box. It's going to show you your different taxing entities that affects your property taxes. So on this one, you've got McLeod County. This one has township, which is the town of Glencoe Township. And then it's got the school district, and then any other special assessments that show up. It gives you the information on when the Truth and Taxation Hearings are held by each of those entities. Usually, your townships don't have to hold that. They approve their budgets in March. And then the one key thing this year that I've always pointed out, and it hasn't been in effect for us for 10 years, is if you hold an election in November, because of the timing, there's a statement on there that says this does not reflect an election that is being held in November. So what you're seeing on this tax statement does not include any new bonding or referendums that a district may pass, because they have to get these out while the election is happening. We don't have results of the election when these are already being printed. So that statement is very important for taxpayers to know. They get this, and they think, oh, that's what my taxes are. The bond passed, we'll move on with life. When you get your actual tax statement come probably mid-April, first part of April, it's not going to be this number. It's going to be a little bit different because we've now added the bond to that. So in this example that I've got here, and I know you can't read it, I just pulled this up as a sample, but this is actually the ag land that the school district owns. So this year, or for next year, we're actually seeing a higher increase in ag land, about a 25% increase. And you can do those calculations up here when you look at your property values between the two years. So our ag land for the school increased 25%, or almost $92,000. The total tax is then when we put that increase by 20, almost 21%. And then you can do the same with each of the entities. If you want to say, well, where's the bulk of my increases coming from? You can do here what I did, the county. The county on the school ag land is increasing 20%. The township had an increase of 16%, and the school district portion increased by 22. So when you average that out, it was a 20.63%. In this next example, this is a residential in Glencoe. And in this case, the house value dropped. And this data becomes a little more important as we go along, as we kind of review some of the property values of the district. But the house value here dropped by almost 5%. There's no ag credit in this situation because it's a residential home. The same type of information here. The only difference is it's City of Glencoe and not a township. And then everything else is the same. So in this situation, the total tax is decreased by a little over 5%. So that homer's like, ah, this is a good thing. Now keep this in mind. You're going to have a bond increase on there. Doing the math on this house with our estimated bond schedule, this homeowner will still have a decrease on their taxes for 2025, just because it's based off of your property values. So a lot of times, we'll get calls in the office saying, oh, what are you doing to my taxes? Why are they going up so much? The first question I ask, what happened to your property values? So that's a key thing for you to look as a property owner, is to watch those property values. Now, when you get these, you can no longer go to the county appeal. They have certain timeframes when you can appeal what your assessed value is. And that's something you would check with, check with the county. So let's walk through, we're going to talk about, when you get to the school one, and this always gets confusing, there's two lines always for the school. If you notice, on the county and the city or township, there's only one line, one amount. When you get to the school, we have two lines. And that's what we're going to talk about next. The one line says voter-approved levies, and the other line says other. And it's always what falls into that other category, because you forget from year to year, even as board, at school, it's like, wow, what is, what's in that other? So we have two different types of voter-approved levies that we can pass as a district, and they're both taxed differently. The first one is our operating referendum. When we go to the voters and we ask, can we have so many dollars per pupil unit for additional revenue to help cover our operating expenses? That is taxed on market value. What that means is anybody that owns ag land or a seasonal property within that county or within that school district boundaries is excluded. So this is usually, you know, one that is okay when we deal with our ag land owners, because ag land is not taxed on that, the operating levy. The second time of, second type of voter-approved levy is our debt service levies. And those are our new building, our roof bond that we just passed, any type of major remodeling project that a district would ask money for. And that is based on net tax capacity. And we'll get into those differences in a little bit. But that means all land is taxed on that, so all the ag land pays tax on this. But they are also eligible for that ag land credit that I showed you on that tax statement. The referendum that we have in place right now is a 10-year referendum for our students. And that, one change with that, usually every time that's expiring, you kind of decide when you want to revote on that. If you decide we still need that money, we have to ask the voters for that. Do you vote a year early? Do you wait? Do you risk it? Vote at the year that it expires? Because if you don't get it passed, it's going to expire, and you're going to have a lag, and you're going to lose some dollars. And that's going to affect your overall budget. Last year's legislation, the 23 legislation passed, a new law that allows school boards to renew- that allows school boards to renew an operating levy referendum one time without voter approval, as long as you keep the amount, uh, the expiring amount the same. But you can then also include that inflationary language that we have on our, our referendum right now. So that's something to keep in mind. In four years, when this is gonna expire, a decision will have to be made. Does the board just wanna re, you know, use their authority and just renew it, save the cost of election? If you know you're gonna need the money, you don't wanna risk it not passing. Um, you know, it could be critical that you know you need that money. If you're not gonna change that amount, you can't all of a sudden just add, you know, a hundred, two-hundred dollars to that dollar amount. If you're just gonna keep going, keep renewing it where it's at when it expires, the board has that levy authority to do that. So, um, I think that helps a lot of districts that really struggle to, um, get those operating levies in place and, um, and passed again. So now we're into that other category. So we talked about the, the voter-approved levies, and now we're into the other. The voter-approved levies are, um, the dollar amounts are approved by the school board and by the voters. So your bond, the board decides what that bond amount is. The voters approve that bond amount. On the operating referendum, the board says, we wanna ask the voters for five-hundred dollars a pupil unit. The voters either approve or don't approve. On the other levies, we have no say really in what these dollar amounts are. The formulas are set by the state legis- legislators. The dollar amounts are determined by your property values and your student enrollment. So we have very little flexibility in, um, what the dollar amounts we get are for those 'cause they're all determined by, by law. So all these top ones, operating capital, reemployment, which is unemployment, safe schools, current technical, building leases, community service, the abatement bond, which is a little different than, um, our regular bonds, achievement and integration. Those right there are all spread on the net tax capacity. The long-term facilities maintenance revenue, which is levy and aid, that is spread on what we call an ag-modified net tax capacity, which means ag land is not taxed on this. All these, the ag land is paying their full amount of tax, but on LTFM, it's reduced by seventy percent. So a little bit different, net tax capacity and ag-modified net tax capacity. So we talked about the levies. Um, the next piece we're gonna talk about, kinda the first big piece in our levy document. When you look at the full levy sheets, it'll give you the basic kinda formula allowances. The next whole section is all about market values, and then, uh, it goes into the student enrollment. So this is the market values. Overall, the increase on the total property values, now this is property values for the whole, the whole school district. We have an increase of seventeen-point-eight percent. Last year, we increased seventeen-point-six percent. So real steady as far as how the market, the total property values, market values are increasing. The one thing also to keep in mind, all this data that we're looking at, and you maybe can't see it, this is twenty-twenty-three values. When the State Department of Education is putting all this data together, um, they're doing it in the summer. The Department of Revenue hasn't finalized all of the market values and all the property values for the district. So they have to use twenty-twenty-three when they start calculating all these formulas. When you get your taxes, it's gonna be based on your twenty-twenty-four market values that show up on your tax statements. So this data, you know, lags a little bit because of that reason of the information coming from the Department of Revenue. So that's the first one, the total property values. Then we take a look at the referendum market values. Now, again, this excludes the ag land and any seasonal properties. This only increased nine percent compared to almost eighteen percent last year. Now, when I see that number, I start to think, hmm, referendum market values, doesn't include ag land. That's telling me the residential or the residential and commercial property values didn't increase as much, or the decrease, like that example I showed you, there was an actual decrease in that household, uh, or that house value. So we're seeing a little bit of shift. If you remember, the housing juggle we've been going through, there's a lot of years where we've had high increases in the referendum market values compared to the total, um, property values. The next one is the net task capacity. This one's calculated a little different. And all of these that I'm talking about are used within the tax levy document. This takes the market values that we just looked at times the class rates. Now, the class rates are what is attached to your type of property. So commercial has a different class rate compared to residential. Residential has a different class rate compared to ag land. Ag land has a different compared to homestead versus non-homestead. So the legislators set what those class rates are. And then this takes the market values times those class rates. So it's all, all different depending on the property. This was an increase of seventeen-point-three percent compared to about nineteen percent last year. And then we go into the adjusted net tax capacity. One more different formula. This, the Department of Revenue, takes a look at your net tax capacity and divides it out by your sales ratio. Now, the sales ratio is the number that they look at what houses are selling for and what they've been assessed at. So they're trying to see how close are your county assessors in determining the value of your property and how close they are to a hundred percent of that property and what it's selling for. Now, when we're in a housing shortage, what's happened? People were buying houses above the assessed market value, above what people were asking for. So, you know, and then the sales ra- ratio was really off. So our sales ratio right now is at ninety percent, um, which is a little better. Last year, we were at eighty, about eighty-nine percent. But in twenty-twenty, we were, the county assessor was at ninety-seven percent. You know, and it's really helpful if they can get, the closer they can get to that a hundred percent as a, either a buyer or seller, you kinda know exactly where that selling point is. And then the next one is that ag-modified. This is what we use for the LTFM, where they're removing that seventy percent of the Class II agriculture land um, for our LTFM funding. So I know that's a lot of data on property values, but hopefully, that gives you a little bit of an explanation of how it's all used in the levy sheets in one way or another. So this one, I put together just a little bit of an example. Um, I can walk through it for you. It gets a little complicated. This is our LTFM revenue, or our long-term facilities maintenance revenue. It's a combination of local levy and state aid. So the first thing they do is they look at our twenty-twenty-three ag-modified adjusted net tax capacity amount, that twenty million right there, or twenty billion. And then they look at our actual pu- adjusted pupil units from twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, pupil units are different from ADM, so just keep that thought, and I'll explain more. One thousand five ninety-one. So they just divide that number out. So we come up with thirteen thousand and three dollars per pupil for the adjusted net tax capacity. And then they look at the statewide average. What do all the districts in the state, where do they fall in? And that came in at thirteen thousand five seventy-nine. So as a way that the state has tried to equalize things, we always hear about things aren't equal between metro and rural and, you know, rural, small districts. So, so they came up with an equalizing factor of a hundred-and-twenty-three percent to try to equal things out. So the farther you are away from the statewide average, your equalizing factor is gonna go up. So they take that hundred-and-twenty-three percent times our GSL number, per pupil unit of thirteen thousand and three, to come up with sixteen thousand seven oh-two. And that's how they're gonna calculate what our levy is. So they're dividing our number by our equalizing factor, which gives us seventy-eight percent. So that means our levy is gonna be seventy-eight percent of this bucket of money. The state aid is gonna be twenty-two percent. So a district that has, um, a lower, um, amount here, they're gonna be able to get more aid, less levy. In our case, we've got a big hunk of it that just goes back to the local taxpayers. So then to calculate what our total revenue is, we get three-hundred-and-eighty dollars per pupil, adjusted pupil unit, times our, um, estimates for twenty-five, twenty-six, which gets really tricky because we have a hard time figuring out current year, day-to-day, what our enrollment is right now. Um, but to estimate twenty-five, twenty-six, which all is part of the levy process that we have to report on, gives us five-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So then they split that out by our levy and, levy and aid percents. Um, so we know levy, equalized levy for us is four-and-thirty-six thousand, about a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand in aid to equal the total long-term facilities maintenance revenue. And this is one of those examples where you never wanna decrease your levy authority on this because if you decrease levy authority, you're gonna lose state aid. So a lot of times when we've talked about under-levying in different categories, anytime you have a state aid component, you don't wanna, uh, mess with that, with that area. And then this just shows the ag credit when this first came into law back in twenty-nineteen. It started at forty percent that the farmers got back, or the ag owners, landowners got back. And then it went to fifty percent, fifty-five, sixty, and now it's been at seventy percent. Now, this bucket of money is a, um, open and standing appropriation from the legislators, which means right now, the legislators, um, they're not gonna take any action on that. This is the money that, um, that school districts will get. So right now, in place of what the farmers aren't paying, we get that back in a, uh, an ag credit, about three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand right now, or for last year, for twenty-four. Um, almost four-hundred thousand for FY twenty-five for us. So we're not, as a district, losing that money because the farmers are getting that credit back. We're getting that in state aid. So the state is covering the portion that the farmers are getting back. So that is an appro- appropriation by the legislator. So the next piece that I mentioned is the student data. Yes?
Does it matter if the, uh, ag credit, if it's homestead or not?
It's, it's all ag land in general. So the, the property value takes your house, garage, and one acre. The rest is all, the ag credit is applied to. Am I right?
That's correct.
Yep. So the next piece of the process then, like I said, is students. The operating, um, referendum levy is based on resident students. So what I have on here is the past few years and our June thirtieth ending resident student counts. You can see the decline here. We keep talking about declining enrollment, and I think this is an important piece of data because it's not just declining enrollment of students in school, we're also losing, um, residents. So I think, if my math was correct, that five-year loss is about two-hundred-and-nineteen resident students that we've lost. And then we look at the average daily membership. So the numbers I have in black here, and it should be black in your handout as well, those are what we use as estimates every time when we get to the truth and taxation. And then what I put in purple, I go back and pull off our final June thirtieth numbers to see how close we were when we approved the levy and then where we ended up. So last year, you can see, we were off about twenty-five, um, you know, a little more there. But it, for me, it's a way to gauge how close we were when I'm working on budget revisions and, um, levy adjustments. So right now, our current enrollment is right around thirteen ninety-one, um, give and take a little bit there. Now, I mentioned before, adjusted pupil units and, um, an average daily membership. So the average daily membership are the number of kids that are sitting in our seats in school. Those are, this is how many kids right now are coming, all right, every day to school. Our state funding is based off of adjusted pupil units. So every pupil that we have is weighted, they call it weighted, is worth different amounts. Um, they've simplified this over the last few years. So a K-through-six student is worth one, and a seventh-through-twelve student is worth one-point-two. So you take your basic formula allowance, and every student in K-through-six just gets whatever that formula allowance is. But the seventh-through-twelfth graders get one-point-two of that formula allowance. So we get a little more funding as they get a little older because it's known that it costs more to educate students as they get into the secondary level. So I'm just gonna go through, um, what the changes are in some of our calculations compared to the prior year. So the first one is the referendum tax. And this includes your referendum, and there's some other components that go with it that get a little more complicated, but it includes equity revenue, local optional revenue, and transitional revenue. And that kinda falls in the same category. Um, the change in our referendum per pupil unit, um, we were at one, uh, five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents, and that's included our increases the last few years with the inflationary factor language on it. So we are now at, for twenty-five, twenty-six, gonna be at five sixty-seven-point-six-four. So an increase on each student of thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents. The inflationary factor is calculated at one-point-zero-two-four-three. So between those categories, that total piece of the levy, uh, that revenue is two-million-two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-six-sixty-nine. Um, state aid on all that is about five-and-a-half percent. So then we move into our other local levies, and these are all the categories that I talked about. So right now, all these categories, it's an increase showing us of sixty-four, just under, uh, sixty-five thousand for all these other different categories. The one area we wanna talk about is our achievement and integration. And that's the piece that, the new program that we had qualified two years ago for, that we put in place. We approved Mr. Sabota's contract. From what we know, it's been a very beneficial program, and Mr. Foss could probably address this, being Dan didn't make it back yet, but he might pop in. Um, it's really been able to, um, service some more students. He's been able to pull some students out that are struggling. How can we do a few more interventions with them, help them along? And besides that component, it's also working with, um, we partner with Hutchinson Schools. So he plans activities with Glencoe and Hutchinson. So they do different, um, activities, different field trips. It's a way of getting kids together a little bit more to cover where we might have some gaps in, um, some of our, um, different races. I don't, Matt, anything else that you've got on it?
Pretty active in, uh, tracking absences and truancy, work with the county.
Yep. So it's been a, a good program. Now, this is one area where we don't have to levy for that amount, and we don't lose state aid. All the other areas, you're gonna lose state aid if there's a aid component. Some of these don't have an aid component right now, like Safe Schools doesn't have an aid component. This year, Current Tech doesn't have an aid component, some years it does. Um, but you don't wanna lose that. This one, you don't lose the state aid that you get on that. So the integration levy for that is about thirty thousand dollars. So that's some more discussion we can have as we get to the end here, if we want to take advantage of that levy authority, or if we wanna under-levy.
And Michelle, can I just jump in?
Yep.
About the A&amp;I program. Um, if you remember from a few years ago, we qualified for this program, right? Based off of a discrepancy in a race between us and a neighboring school district. That doesn't look like we're gonna qualify anymore, right? So it looks as if next year will be the last year of our program, unless, of course, we get information that changes that. And so it's something that we wanna take a look at in terms of, of what Michelle will talk about here in a little bit, about the dollars. The people that we have under contract are set, but with a little bit more levy authority, there could potentially do some more things for kids. And so that's where, you know, having that, that discussion about where we wanna go at the end of this. But it would be, if at all intensive purposes, this program will be like a one, one more year. So.
And we, I don't know if we'll know that number in January yet, possibly.
I think it's, I think it's coming up in February, we'll, we'll know. And I know Dan works with the person, Vanessa Mo is her name, uh, very closely. And they're, they, they'll be able to, and they've been really wonderful. And they're, they, they'll be able to, and they've been really wonderful to work with. But they'll be able to tell us and walk us through whether we're, we're going to be getting that again or, or not. And, and if it's not there, well, then the program sadly would go away. But that's just what it is. You, you have to qualify for your numbers. And there's been many years where we don't qualify. For whatever reason, and I think it was by basically just one or two students, we, we ended up having a discrepancy where we did qualify. And, and if you remember from this program, we wanted to jump on this. You could have waited a whole year to kind of ease into the program type of thing. But MDA gave, MDE gave us the advice of, you should try to get going in this program, because you may not qualify the next time around. And when you do, if you say yes to the program, you're guaranteed three years of the program, even if you didn't qualify the very next year. So, and now we're on the third year of our program.
This will be the third year.
Yep, coming up.
The other thing I wanted to mention here, the building lease levy, where you see Cosmos Learning Center, Marshall Learning Center, New London Spicer Learning Center. As part of the, we're part of Southwest West Central Service Cooperative. As part of being a member of that, the co-op, we get to pay part of the fees when they lease different buildings or different spaces. So we've always been part of the Cosmos Learning Center. As you know, they provide Level 4 services, where we occasionally need to send students there for behaviors when we are not able to service that student correctly. They've now built a new learning center in Marshall and one in New London Spicer. So you've maybe seen some of that, if you get updates from the co-op as well, that we would be able to send students there. For us, the distance doesn't really work, it's not really conducive for us. But we could, if all of a sudden we had a certain situation and we needed to take advantage of that for a reason, we could. But we also have to pay a portion of that. Because these two just opened up in Marshall and in New London Spicer, that added a cost to us, which we get the levy authority for, but it was an increase of almost $22,000 for us. So it's kind of hard for me to take that in when it's like, ah, but we're not using those buildings. We've always used the Cosmos building, but we don't use the other two, but that's just how it is. Well, when you take $22,000 off of $64,000, we're only getting levy of $40,000 additional money. The rest goes to help pay our costs in there. In the past, we didn't get the levy authority. The co-ops then would bill us back. They'd do a big calculation at the end of the year, and they would charge every district that's part of the co-op, based on their expenses, and we'd pay our bill at the end of the year. This way, it helps districts regroup some of that money by passing it on to the taxpayers, and we get that money. So it's hard, but that's what we do when we're part of a co-op, you're sharing those expenses. So that's how it is. But when I take that off of there again, it's like, ah, let us keep that money. But that, that's how it is, and we're in a situation where we don't, we can't put up our own learning center, you know, to service a few kids that we need to. And then, again, long-term facilities maintenance is part of this, and that's based on the adjusted net tax capacity.
Michelle?
Yes?
The, like, the cooperative and stuff, if, geographically, if I'm thinking about it, isn't GSL like almost the furthest east within the cooperative?
Other than Lester Prairie.
Okay, so some of it is geographical as far as some additional expense and/or pros or cons. What would be, if there are any additional options as far as cooperatives that GSL could be a part of, that, like I said, pros or cons, may be considered in the future?
Yep. Interesting you bring that up, because we, at the cabinet level, have had a lot of discussions about looking at alternatives. If you remember, when the regions were put into place in the 70s, I believe, the state assigned school districts what co-op, what region you were going to be part of. GSL was assigned to be part of region, out of Marshall, Region 6 and 8. That's their, their region numbers. When I look at it, I'm like, why wasn't Glencoe assigned to be part of Region 5 in Mankato? You know, when we have to go to meetings as part of the co-op, we have a two-hour drive, two-hour drive back, versus we could have gone to Mankato. But I wasn't at the state, so I couldn't give my input on that. So that's how the regions were kind of set up. Now, each region offers different services. We're fortunate, Marshall, as a co-op, offers a lot of different services. Some, not all the regions offer the special ed services like they do. We get our special ed director from them. The positions that we only need a small portion, like your deaf and hard of hearing, your vision specialist, PT, OT, when we can't work with the local hospital, we utilize them to provide those services. If you remember in the past, when we, our speech, we were getting so much speech from the co-op, and that's when we said, we looked at the data, let's hire our own speech person. We could do that, get more services, save a little bit of money. So we have been talking about what would it look like if we would try to join, like, Southwest Metro? You know, because we do occasionally have students that we send that way. Again, it depends on the needs of the student, who's got a spot for that student, and how we can best serve that student. And the principals work with the directors of that. So we have sent students that way as well. We have to pay a little more, because we're not a member of that. So right now, in our evaluation, the data, Chris has been working real hard on that, collecting that data. We're not sure if we're quite there yet, that we have enough to make that switch. But we've definitely had quite a few conversations from the principals' level. You know, there are situations where Cosmos serves us really, really well, and sometimes they, they don't. So we look a different direction, because our first goal is to meet the needs of the student the best we can, so.
We also did that with our social worker, too.
Yes.
A little while ago, when it was more to our advantage, not only from service standpoint, but also from a financial standpoint. And then now the, the social worker is our employee. But it, it's, like Michelle said, it's one of these balancing acts that, you know, gets difficult, because if, if, if we have students that are in need, and there's a spot in New London Spicer, geography is going to tell you it's not the greatest location for us, because of the, the nature of where they're at. And if you remember from back a number of years ago now, when, when GSL was with their own special ed cooperative with Hutchinson, Buffalo Lake Hector, and McLeod West, well, when that dissolved, and Hutchinson ultimately went by themselves, that's another part of the reason that we've morphed into being with Southwest West Central, because they partnered, that's who we partnered with from the financial world, or from the special education world. And we do all of our finances through Southwest. So it, we're looking at it, we're always looking at options to see if we can service our students better. And we'll continue to do so.
Community service is all based on net tax capacity, meaning all the land pays on it. Only have an increase of just under $15,000 for all these categories. The one change they made a few years ago, in the past, the ECFE funding was kind of a static formula. And they finally changed it, so the law now states when the formula allowance, the gen ed, the general education formula increases, that percent, say if it increases 2%, that same percentage applies to ECFE funding. So that has helped our ECFE a little bit, to get more funding for that. We don't get the full amount, the funding, and the funding formula is based off a 23% of, of the formula allowance. But these are the categories that fall into here. School ready, uh, school readiness is all aid, there's no local levy on school readiness. ECFE is levy. And then our non-public is state aid. And then preschool screening falls in there. And then we get some money in our PAC program, our school age daycare program. If we have a student that might require some additional assistance or additional apparel with that student, we can levy to get some extra dollars for that. Our three-to-five-year-old daycare also falls under Fund IV, but it has no levy or state aid component, that's strictly a tuition-based. So a little bit on the, the debt categories then. This first one, the voter-approved, was a building project from 2015. Like Jeff Sealy mentioned earlier, that'll expire in '45. The levy authority, $1,409,000. The, the difference here, the levy authority is based off the bond debt schedule. So the MDE has those debt schedules, they, they calculate, they can see what our payments are, what our obligation is. But we are required to levy 105% of whatever that bond payment is. And the reason for that, we're very fortunate here, there's not a lot of delinquent taxes, at least right now. When the housing crunch, when there was a lot of foreclosures, we saw a little bit more of that. We still have to pay our bills. We have to pay that, that debt, we have to pay our bond when it's due in February and August. So that 5% actually gives you a little buffer to make sure you've got enough money to pay your bills. When that fund balance gets too big in there, the state watches that fund balance, and then they give you a levy reduction on that. So this year's levy reduction on our building bond, our 2015 bond, is a levy reduction of 53, almost $54,000 that came off of that number as a levy reduction. Before, the roof bond got added into our data, the reduction was going to be $84,000. But now that we have to add that in, they have to decrease that fund balance allowance a little bit to account for the 105% on the, on the new bond. I love these pictures, when I, you know, I always kind of look for pictures to add, and I'm like, we have come so far as a team. When I look back at the old stay on the path, walk between the buildings, Helen Baker, it's just, to me, exciting to look at what we've got now. This, this is what the bond was all about right here. The new bond, of course, as you know, we've talked about it the last several months. This was the roof project, including some HVAC and some facade work. So the new levy authority of this is $681,000. And again, that's based off of, right now, the estimated bond debt schedule. And they're usually pretty accurate with what they're doing. But once we have the, sell the bonds and have the final bond schedule, anything that gets changed will be next year, as, come through as a levy adjustment. And again, you know, Jeff mentioned, and it didn't click with me until the other day when I was working this, that both of those bonds will expire in the same year. I'll be really old if I'm not dead, but it'll be fun to see, to have a bond burning party in 20 years, so. So the, we have one piece of debt that was non-voter-approved, and it's an abatement bond, which the board has the authority to do. Strict, abatement bonds can only be used for parking lot, and I think it was a great solution to fund getting our parking lot taken care of. That was a 10-year abatement bond, so that's going to expire in four years. Time goes fast. And then we have the small lease levy on our early childhood building, and that expired last year. So that's not on our taxes any longer. I pulled in this slide, you as a board just saw this recently, but not everybody has seen this. It is posted on the GSL website. But I wanted to pull this in just as a reminder. This is right from Clifford, Clifton Larson Allen, that shows our, our debt. You know, we don't like paying taxes, we don't like those tax increases, but I think it's important to remember, you know, the grass isn't always greener on the other side when you go look at homes and taxes. The dark blue is the GSL debt. And '23, '24, of course, isn't finalized when they presented ours. The aqua color is district similar in size to ours. And the, the greeny color is the state average. So if you look at where our total debt is compared to those other two categories, I think we're doing really well for what we're able to provide to our students. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that back out as a reminder that I think we're doing pretty good on what we've asked our voters for. We've been very conscious and very careful in what we ask our voters for. When you take our total debt service expenditures divided by our, last year's ADM, our students, it's about a little over $1,000 per student for our bonded debt.
If you remember from back in our building project campaign, this stat, GSL was one of the least taxed, taxed school districts. It was, in the whole entire state, there was like maybe two or three other ones, four other ones that are, that were kind of in our same area. Even with the passage of our last two, I, I still think we're, you know, th- this graph shows the deal that, you know, I'll, I'll use that term, the deal that our taxpayers are getting for the education for our students is exceptional, in terms of where we're at with our dollars. There are school districts that have, as you can see, the average, and, and even schools that are, that are our size. We're still one of the lowest taxed, even with the, with the couple of approvals that we have. And I think that just shows that we have been conscious of, of the taxpayer dollar. We have been conscious of making sure that the decisions that we make are very frugal in nature, and at the same time, really trying to, to do what's best for our students and trying to find that balance. So we'll continue, hopefully, with that and address our needs, but we're also obviously taking an eye on the taxpayer as well.
Credit goes to you as a board, because you have been very aware of the taxpayers. We don't want to overtax them. I think the projects that we've done have been very much needed. So I think you as a board, get credit for keeping that in mind. And we've talked about that many times, when, do we ask for this amount? Should we ask for this amount? No, we don't want to go too high because of the taxpayer into the taxpayers. So I think we've done a really good job with that.
Michelle, before you leave the debt service.
Oh, yep.
The long-term debt for the parking lot, like you said, expires in FY '29, a 10-year abatement. Is there a possibility of renewal as it comes off for maintaining the parking lot? Or was that abatement bond just for?
New?
New. Do you remember?
I'll have to check.
Okay, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I think you can pass an abatement bond at any time. So I would look, you know, as I look around facilities in our projects, even, I mean, we have the rotation of the seal coating.
Correct.
That Lincoln lot should be dug up and redone. I mean, we can, you can only seal coat it so many times, and you're going to still have the same issues. If that's something that you want to entertain, I would look at doing that Lincoln lot. You know, I don't even know, couldn't estimate that price right now. You know, we did this at about a million. You know, I don't think your Lincoln lot would be half of that, but. I, abatement bonds, you could do it any time.
Okay.
And so I wouldn't say it's necessarily new, well, new, but you know, the old high school parking lot, we redid that. So it was old, but kind of maintaining, but a new parking lot, same as what you would want to do. So just doing maintenance on it, like the seal coating, I don't think you could bond for it, but if you're doing that. But I can verify that for you.
That might be helpful information and stuff, just for us to have as we're planning, because, like you said, the Lincoln lot eventually has a total redo.
Yep.
But if there's any line items or any ways of additional dollars for the maintaining of what we currently have, because like you said, our operations and facilities has a rotating schedule already in place, as we've looked at and talked about, to maintain what we currently have, using our existing dollars. But those get stretched, and there's always other additional projects and stuff that that, those dollars could be used for. So if we would possibly know if that's a chance at looking at another option that way, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Well, and I think now, the way we've set it up on our, with our LTFM, of keeping those lots on a rotation to make sure that seal coating, crack repair is being done, it's going to last a lot longer than the Lincoln lot. You know, we've done the seal coating, but it's just, that one should be redug up. And, you know, start new again, is what I would do. But that, you're right, I mean, we've talked about this before. When the early childhood came off the levy, you know, if you've got another project going on, that's your ideal time to put something in place, because then your taxpayers don't see that change. You know, all of a sudden, something drops off, and it's like, oh, my gosh, my taxes just dropped $300. And then you try to pass a new one again. It's like, I don't want to vote for another increase. So if you've got something in mind, that's the time to do it. You time that out when one is coming off, then replace it with something equal or less to utilize those dollars. Because this one, if you remember, the tax impact was not very much on an individual taxpayer. But it was sure a fun way to get our parking lot done, which was needed. So this is just the graph. We've kind of been pretty steady. We've kind of been pretty steady over the last few years as you look at the pay levy history. So in, we got a couple of years. I think I have another slide of where we underleveled. Last year, our levy authority, if we would have levied for A&amp;I, would have been $4,642. Now, we underleveled that amount. And this year, now with the roof bond, it'll be $5,490 with the A&amp;I. So we'll talk about that in a little minute here. Before the roof was added on, the roof bond last week when I had the numbers, our levy authority increase was at about 3%. Now with the roof, the increase will be 19.16 with the full levy authority. So now we're going to switch gears a little bit. One of the things we have to talk about or include in our information for tonight is just some basic information about the school district budget and how it works. As you know, the school district budget is divided into multiple different accounts where we track things in our financials, both on the expenditure side and revenue side. I have a link here, and if you go, this is all posted on, under my page on the school website. This link is a real basic information on school funding and how it works. It's a great tutorial on how it works, so I would check that out if you have a chance. So we basically deal with our general fund, which includes transportation and capital expenditures. Quite a few years ago, we used to have Funds III, which was transportation, and Fund V, which was capital expenditures and Fund I. They collapsed those all into Fund I. I think there's probably still few districts that still track those separate, and they crosswalk it to Fund I. But for us, it's all included in Fund I. There used to be different funding formulas for, like transportation. That transportation amount per pupil unit is now included in the funding formula. It's about $4 that gets included for that. Fund II is our food service fund. Fund IV is community service. Fund VII is debt service. Building construction falls into Fund VI, which we had, we closed out, and now we get to open it up again. We have our scholarships that flow into Fund XVIII. We have an assigned or a designated fund. We call it kind of a trust fund. That's where we put some money aside for when we need it. And then we have our student activity accounts, which are Funds X and Fund XXI. I love this picture. This is what we try to instill in our kids, right? Besides just educating, clean up the bleachers after an event. I always have to steal pictures from Chris's, whatever account you use.
It's now called X.
X, X account, yep. It's fun just capturing those kids doing those things when you don't ask them to. So a lot of numbers here, I'm not going to read through them all. You can do that on your own, and if you have questions, please ask me. It shows actual expenditures and revenues for 2324. So you can see where those numbers, audited numbers came out after the audit, what the fund balance is in each of those. And then our proposed preliminary budget for 2425 that was improved in June. This is the budget that I'm now working on for the revisions. We've got quite a bit of it done in the general fund. I haven't touched the other funds yet, which are just always minor budget revisions. So my plan is hopefully to have a snapshot for that to the finance committee, if not the full board, in January. The basic formula allowance right now is $7,281. The one thing that helps schools that have declining enrollment is there's a funding category called declining enrollment. When we approve the budget in June, we don't know what September's enrollment is going to be. We have to have staffing in place. Once September hits, we can't reduce staff. You're stuck with, not stuck with, but that's the staff you have to have. You can't just say, well, we're down 50 kids, we've got to eliminate a couple staff. That's not how it works. We have to keep the staff that was in place, and that's by law. So there's no way to account for a loss of enrollment that you weren't maybe anticipating. So they put in place a declining enrollment revenue bucket, and you get 28% of the funding formula to offset the declining enrollment. So back in September when we did this, our declining enrollment revenue was almost $100,000. Well, that's a big boost in our budget. It might cover the salary for one or one and a half of the teachers that you maybe wouldn't have needed had you known your revenue was going to, or your enrollment was going to drop so much. When I redid the numbers a few weeks ago, that revenue, enrollments come up a little bit from what we first set, so that declining enrollment revenue right now is about $79,000 that we're pulling in. So it's a nice way to help districts a little bit, you know, 28% of that funding formula allowance to ease into your planning for the following year. So you have time to look at that enrollment piece before you have to make those decisions on staffing. And then there's just a couple of slides that show the graph. You can see easily where the majority of our money comes in and gets spent, and that's all in your general fund, and then your other funds fall into place. You know, very little money is flowing through some of these other areas. So that's the revenue pie chart, and then the expenditure looks just about the same thing. So you can see, again, general fund is where the money is. About 85% of the budget falls into the general fund category. So this is the summary then. Here's what I was talking about. You can see back in 2018, we had levy authority of 10.3%. We ended up levying, underleving, so our increase to our taxpayer was only 3.2%. And that's sometimes people forget that, that our taxpayers forget it. That we do as a board, look really closely. We take these levy numbers seriously, and we could have just easily said, no, we're going to take the full levy authority of 10%. We don't care what the taxpayers think. But no, we took, stopped, and took a close look, was able to reduce that levy authority to 3%. That happened again in last year. Our levy authority was 3.71%, and we underlevied that A&amp;I. So our increase was only 2.84%. So the two numbers that we have on the agenda for you tonight is the full levy authority, which includes the roof bond and the achievement and integration at 19.16%, $5,490,686.60. If you decide you don't want to include the $30,000 from achievement and integration levy authority that you have, it'll still come back next year, one more year, as a levy adjustment if you decide to add that in. If you take that out, it would drop it to 18.5% or $5,460,577.32. So those are the two numbers on your board agenda that you, as a board, will decide which number you want to go with. All of the information, all of my budgets, all of the levy sheets, all the truth and taxation, you can find all of that information on the school district website. If you go to the GSL website, go under District, Administrative Departments, District Office, and that's where you'll find whatever you're looking for, audits, truth and taxation, budgets, all very transparent. If you're looking for something, if you can't find it, give me a call, send me an email. All of this levy information is public. It's available on the Department of Education website. You can look it up for any district in the state. If you want to look at ours and compare it to somebody else, it's all, oh, there's, sometimes you got to dig a little, and that's why I say, just give me a call. I can help you walk through that if you're looking for, you know, a certain school district, and you want to see what they're doing in International Falls. I can help you out with, so. That's what I have. Any questions? More questions? Done?
Let me go back to page four. Market values and referendum market values. Just to make sure I have it clear in my head. The market values show roughly $2.5 billion in market values. And then the referendum, the school's egg is 1.3. So roughly, that's about half. The egg land is roughly about half the market value of what the total market values are. Is that correct?
Yep. And, you know, just looking at what the district's egg land increased, and if that's, you know, a sample of what happened in the whole county, or, you know, and I haven't looked at full county, McLeod County numbers, or, you know, any other, I haven't seen any other tax statements. I haven't gone out and looked at anybody's. But seeing what was happening with the residential and the egg going up, you know, that's that swing in total market values and where it fell in. That's, you know, that's part of that data analytics that you could do if you had enough time to spend on deciphering where those increases were. But just that snapshot shows me that this year, the increases, the majority of the increases were in the egg land values. And I saw that in Redville County, because I looked at my mom's, and hers was up 25%. Huh?
Silicon.
Was up too, yeah. Good.
I always have a quick.
Good.
I've been on a loop quite a bit the last few years. The one thing that caught me by surprise was this operations levy that you don't have to go to the public for. When did that happen?
Last year. 2023 legislators passed that. So I'm not sure who the author of the bill was, where it came from. So it basically, they knew districts were struggling with, one, the expense of running an election when they were just asking for a renewal. They weren't asking for, you know, we want to increase this by $500 a pupil unit. So they said, if you're just asking for a renewal with your current language, which can include the inflationary factor, why not let boards just approve that levy authority one time, and then you could do your 10 years or seven years, however yours was set up. If it was set up for five years only, you can't then all of a sudden do it for 10 years. You have to go with what you had.
Is this well-known to the public?
I don't know. Ask Coffee Club and see if they know it.
Well, they don't know anything. I usually follow this fairly well. That caught me by surprise.
Well, it came about real quick, because if you remember, the legislative session last year, it wasn't real pretty. It came real late, at the 11th hour, all right? And then by the middle of June, school boards had to approve that resolution to adopt that language. So when that.
In your opinion, is it a good idea?
I feel it is. For one, when it, I think the law was right. If you're going to ask for more money, then no, it needs to go to the voters. If you're just renewing it, I think that's okay. And it's got to be the same amount of time. But, so if you know your referendum is going to expire, and you would normally vote in November, yeah, in November, and you want that on your levy sheets, it's got to be a resolution in June. So the timing is real tricky, and there's not much leeway. If you don't hit their deadline, you're going to the voters for a question.
And I think part of the data that they looked at for this law, and again, I don't have any of that in front of me or anything like that, but they looked at the success rate of that when school districts were asking for the exact same thing in all the years past. Right? They looked at it, and they said that the vast majority of the time, those were successful. Yep, they still had to go back to the voters. So philosophically, that's, you know, something that I think a lot of people appreciate and want. But with this law, they looked at the success rate, and they said, well, we're going to try to find a compromise and thus save districts a whole bunch of money to run an election when a high probability is is that they would pass because they're not asking for anything that they didn't already, if that makes sense.
You know, I've been around the school board long enough to realize that operations levy generally are acceptable. Bond levies, however, are not.
Right.
Very difficult to pass. So is the board comfortable in having decided to bypass the public?
We haven't really, we haven't really talked about it as a board.
We haven't got to it because we still have, what, five years left of?
Well, that's why it kind of surprised me here.
Current one.
Where'd this go from?
Yeah, the rules can change before that time.
Yeah, we haven't.
Legislators change.
One of the things that we did is that we passed a 10-year levy, if you remember, because we didn't want to keep going back to the taxpayers. And so far, we're remaining true to that.
And part of that is also having a first-hand factor?
And we built that in.
That's built in.
That was part of the 10-year to say, that was a change from when we did it before. But we did ask for that because of the fact that that does give us a little bit of a boost that deals with inflation, because the prices of everything that we're paying have to go up.
I'm not arguing against it.
No, I understand.
I'm just saying, I'm not sure the public knows this. And I don't know if you'd get a backlash out of it or not, but more often than not, it's just apathetic out there.
Two, three years from now, finance could change drastically when we're going to be looking at a state deficit, right? So as a school district, your funding gets reduced. How are you going to make that funding up? And we might, the board might have to decide, we're going early to the voters and asking for more money.
Well, that's why you're retired early.
Well, and now that the, you know, the funding formula is also tied to inflation. And what is a little scary is depending on where all this whole thing goes, you can kind of predict where you're probably going to end up. Right?
It's different than years.
Versus higher than, you know, hey, you could lobby, we could argue, we could, you know, campaign for an additional dollars because of this reason, that reason. I'm nervous that in the end, the funding formula will, you already know what your funding formula is going to be.
Because there's a ceiling and a floor right now on the funded formula. So that's kind of set in law. So there's no real big guessing game anymore. It's like, oh, what do we build in the budget for a formula allowance increase? Are you using 2%? Are you using 3%? Or I used to just stay static quo until I knew what happened with the legislators. So a lot can change in four or five years.
I think another piece too is that a big expenditure that many districts have is special education costs and trying to keep up with those. And if we recall, the special education is federally funded, and it funnels through the Department of Education. And if things change at the national level with regard to the Department of Education, what will that mean for the Departments of Education for each of the states? Meaning, will the Departments of Education in each of the states also look different? Not that they would be eliminated, but, you know, would they look different? And would they have to take on more of the responsibilities that some of which lie currently at the national level? An example, like I said, special education. So that's one piece of the whole funding formula and puzzle piece that we look at with regard to those decisions about operating as well.
Yep, good point. Thanks for the question. That's a good one. You're right, it was, it did get passed late, so.
So thank you, Michelle. You know, in the end, if you go back to our agenda item, we got to reconvene and want to do all that discussion then? Okay.
Ready? Okay, I will ask for a motion at this time to reconvene our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Jamie and a second by Jason to reconvene the board meeting at 7:09 PM. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And we are reconvened. You want me to read and then we'll discuss? Okay. Action item aye, levy certification. The school district held its annual truth and taxation hearing at 6:00 PM. The final levy needs to be certified to the home county auditor no later than December 28, 2024. The full levy amount is $5,490,686.60. The under levy amount is $5,460,577.32. Information was presented at truth and taxation. And do you want me to do a motion and everything before we discuss? Okay. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
You need to make a motion while you're doing it.
Oh, yeah. So do we want to discuss first?
That's where I think we better discuss.
Yeah, that's where it is, yep. Thanks, Tricia. Yeah, no, yeah, let's discuss first.
So basically, when you start looking at it, the difference between, excuse me, what we're talking about is that A&amp;I dollars. And the budget for what we're doing has been pretty well set. What the additional dollars would do would ultimately provide What the additional dollars would do would ultimately provide some more opportunities for kids. What specifically that is, I don't think we have decided that yet, but it does go right back to the students. When you look at what that difference is between a taxpayer, you know, a, a residential home would see a difference of a dollar, a dollar fifty or something along those lines. It's really a small amount. When you put it all collectively, that $30,000 can certainly help do some more things in the A and I program. But I can understand also why we want to try to be as efficient as possible. And so trying to give you a recommendation, I would love to be able to see this goal so that our students can have more opportunities. But I also totally understand where, where we're at with, with this authority. When you take, when you take a look at where we would be, we're ultimately talking about how you would go about with that A and I. The last couple of years, we made it work without the levy authority from our local taxpayers. When you look at the difference of, of an opportunity for this last year in asking our taxpayers to, to ultimately step up to say, hey, we would, we would appreciate, or we would support, this is where you guys come into play because you're the governing authority of that. The money would be good, for good use. Because it would go directly to the students. The, the people that we would be assigning are already in the budget. If that makes sense? So when you ask, what would that additional money go towards specifically? Not sure. Directly, it would go to students.
Do you-
Does that make sense?
Do you think that our A and I program, we're, we're in year three now, right?
We'll be.
Year two.
We're in year two.
Next year is year three.
Collectively, has it, have we had more of an increase in students that are participating with it? Are the kids, I mean, I guess what I want to know is, how much is it? Can you put any kind of a dollar amount or, or whatever on how much it's benefiting the kids?
No, because the, the, the big, the big benefit is Mr. Saboda working with those kids on an individual basis, dealing with, you know, attendance, dealing with academics, dealing with behaviors. That money is already set. Where this stuff would come into play is to be able to do a couple more opportunities with students in different grade levels to go and maybe it's another type of field trip that they could go to, another opportunity. We're, we're working with our second graders. We're working with our, I wish Matt was here, fifth grade, sixth grade. We're working with our junior high because they go down to Mankato State. And then we're working with our high school group. Could you say, we want to do something with our kindergarten group? Do we want to do something now with our fourth grade group? You got to remember, we're also working with Hutchinson. So logistics, you have to get, you know, coordinated and do those types of things. But it does give you some dollars to, to work with when you have an opportunity.
So what you're saying is that we are trying to touch more children or include more children each, with each and every project that we do, then we're trying to open it up and, and include more kids. And so by having this extra money, we could probably help our, include more kids.
That's exactly what I'm saying is, is that this additional levy would go directly to students and more students. And not just the students that are identified, there, you have to include everybody in this program. So it is including everybody. And when you look at it from a case by case basis or a, you know, like a, a home, the tax impact is really minimal, but collectively, it gives you an additional $30,000.
So Donna, one example might be, and it's really hard to put a dollar amount on it, but for example, Mr. Saboda, he is watching kids that are maybe sitting on the bubble of credits, graduation, dropout, those types of things, truancy. He's working on them and he has seen success of kids that he's now gotten back on track. So if you can save one student from dropping out, staying in school, so we continue to get state aid on that, on that student, well, that's $10,000. You know, so there's one example where this kind of does come into place. So it's really hard to pinpoint. You can't identify students. But that's one of the things that he, he's really focusing on is working directly with those students. And we can make the program work either way. We respect whatever the board decides. It's been working really well. We just know next year, based on the data that we have, it'll probably be the last year of the program. Again, none of this money is going to go to Mr. Saboda. His contract is set based on that. So whatever additional programming we can offer, whether it be speakers for students, training for some staff,
Training for staff.
Which we haven't done too much of, but it's pulling in those, those different racial categories and identifying.
And when they start working on their budget for the next year, they now would be able to potentially have, you know, $30,000 more to set.
A wonderment that I have is, in a sense, we have a year and a half. If, we have a year and a half to get systems into place that will continue to service kids and serve kids of the district when perhaps some of the staffing or some of the individuals that are currently in budget and stuff, like a Dan Saboda. We have about a year and a half to make sure that we really solidify the programming so that it is in support moving forward without being a crutch that we lose because of the people that are helping the, the programs. So building something that is not reliant maybe on staff or on a Dan Saboda type position. I guess that's, that's one of my worries is that we have a year and a half. And, and because I'm hearing what you're saying as far as that we're having success, we're moving forward. We're, we're, in a sense, rescuing kids that are on the bubble. I think Matt had mentioned attendance, you know, we're going in the right direction. And, and a lot of it is because of like Dan being on top of it and so forth. I just really wonder and worry that we're getting programming in place and systems in place that as it changes, as funding changes and so on, that we don't lose ground or go back to square one.
Well, and we had this conversation about the program from the very start.
Correct, absolutely, we did.
Do we still take advantage of this program because it's like a gift card, right? Eventually, it's going to run out and then how do you replace those things?
Correct.
One thing that, that I know Matt is going to be working on and we're going to be working on is this AdSys funding that would hopefully fill some of that with getting some more interventionists and things like that. So, and that's working in January when that grant opens up. You know, can that fulfill this, you know, potentially a little bit? But the fact of the matter is, is, you know, Mr. Saboda's position will no longer be a part of the school district when this funding gets over and we're going to have to figure out what your point is. And it's a, it's a good point.
And, and you're making a very good point as well with regard to intervention support and help as well. Because as staff is going through the training of REED Act and having gone through it as an educator as well, it, it is obviously professional development in your building and your developing and you are investing in your staff. But with that being said, there is a lot of student support that will be needed that we have to, as a district, be ready to kind of put our money where our mouth is in support of the REED Act and best practices, which is what we've always done. And this is another new ask, if you will, of, of a heavy lift that's coming. So I, I like that you are mentioning that.
Trying to have that vision, but boy, it gets tough. And then, and then you talk REED Act, what is the next phase going to be when you start hitting, you know, ultimately more staff? You know, the state ultimately said K through three. We opted to do K through six, which I think is a good thing because we're getting more staff trained. But what will that look like in seventh through 12th grade? What components of the teachers are going to be doing it? How is that going to look? Where's the funding going to come from? And in the big picture of this, you know, the surplus of the state is not going to be the same as what it's had in the past.
Right.
It's, we've got big challenges ahead of us.
I think, I think that we have always done and continue to do a really good job as a district trying to continue to develop the staff we have and invest in the staff we have. And, and we have an excellent staff here at GSL in support of students. And then we have a wonderful family base as well within our district in support of the kids and in support of the district. I, I just, I, I really think that we have to look strongly at what our intervention support of students and of classroom staff is going to look like. Because our staff in classrooms will always and has always done the best that they can. But I think that we're going to need to definitely have some more.
So with that said, yeah, you know, going back to just this, you know, decision ultimately, would this benefit students? The answer is yes.
Chris, I look at it, you know, we chose, we didn't levy for it last year. This appears to be not a sustainable thing. And we certainly have seen this in Minnesota Department of Education and certainly the legislature where we have these one or two year things that they come and they go. I mean, I just look at this, we've been doing this program. We can continue to do the program, yes, potentially it's an enhancement, but it just doesn't have that concrete, you know, we have to do it. And I just don't feel that's what we should do with levies. You know, it's pretty concrete with most of these areas, if not all of them, that we know where that money's going and we can allocate that. Michelle can say, yep, this is what this, this is what this. This is one of these that I, I just feel that we should be under levying on this and-
And that's what we've done the last couple of years.
Yeah, I, I just-
We can continue to stay consistent on it. We, as a cabinet, talked about this as an opportunity. We talked to Mr. Saboda and you're like, and he looked at you and said, we can do more things with kids. And when you look at what that would impact, you know, the local taxpayer, it would be really minimal and this is an opportunity. So I wanted to have that discussion. But if you guys as a, as a board, look at it as, as staying consistent, our answer is, is that we're going to continue to do the program with the dollars that we have and budget it that way. And we are okay with that.
To Clark's point and, and what you're mentioning, do we know what our partners Hutchinson have done with their conversations along, I'm assuming, the same lines?
Well, if, if we don't qualify, they're not a part of the program either.
Right, no, I understand that, but I mean, the discussion we're having right now,
Oh, what they're doing for their-
Isn't Hutchinson having the same discussion?
Yeah, I, I don't know what they're doing.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty sure they levy. We're one of the few that, that qualified for achievement integration that don't take advantage of the levy dollars. And we've done that because of being conscious of the taxpayers. I'm pretty sure Hutch has the levy piece in place.
From, from the information that Vanessa Moe has given us, most schools levy for this, is what they've said.
As far as Hutch's programming, I don't know. Dan has those conversations with those principals. The thing Dan coordinates with that Hutch pays, they have to pay us $20,000 that's built into their budget for Dan being the coordinator. He coordinates all the events. So when we do a field trip for the second graders, Hutch's second graders go, our second graders go. When they take the fifth grade, their fifth grade goes. So Dan's coordinating all of that. Hutch still pays for, so say they went to the Grinch a couple of weeks ago. Hutch still pays for their tickets for their kids and they do their own transportation. But they do it together as a way of integrating those kids. That's the whole purpose of it. Same with the fifth grade. They're paying their portion, but Dan does all the coordinating and transportation and tickets and all that kind of stuff. But as far as their programming in their school, I don't know what they're doing with that. Is that what you were kind of wondering?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're kind of talking about $30,000. We're talking about $30,000. And I guess I'm just kind of wondering what Hutchinson's amount is that they may or may not be adding to theirs.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure.
Is what I guess I'm, is more what I'm asking. Because, yeah, I, I, and I think you articulated very well, just refreshing everyone's memory in the public too. But, yeah, I guess I'm just kind of wondering what dollar amount they may be having or may not be having a discussion about.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
Sure.
I would motion that we set the final 2024 levy payable 2025 where we've been under levy at $5,460,577.32.
Do I have a second to Clark's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Jason? Okay, I have a motion by Clark and a second by Jason to set the final 2024 levy payable in 2025 at the $5,460,577.32. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And action item carries. Do I have, what? Oh, yep. Do we have any, do we have acknowledgements that you want to do before we adjourn? Huh?
We did the addendum. I think it was on the consent agenda.
Yeah, that was part of the consented agenda. But, yeah, do you have acknowledgements you want to do before?
I do have a couple of acknowledgements. This is a time period where we are saying goodbye to two of our board members. And I would like to say on behalf of all of us at the Glencoe Silver Lake School District, thank you to Donna and thank you to Clark for your years of service. Between the two of you, I believe-
Step on it.
Sorry, everybody. Between the two of you, I believe it was over 25 years of service to our students, our staff and our community. On behalf of, on behalf of the GSL School District, I just want to say thank you for your commitment, your dedication and all of your years of service. I am going to miss you guys very much. It's been a, the vast majority of my tenure here have been with you guys on the board. And so I want to say thank you and I wish you nothing but the best. On behalf of the district, we have your bell. And this is a re-bell to Clark. Thank you, Clark, very much for all of your years of service.
Yeah, I don't need two bells.
And Donna, here is yours. Thank you for all of your years of service. Please, let me get a picture of the end.
I just wanted to say thank you too for everything. This journey would have been very difficult without Michelle's help because the way you explain everything is so, it makes it so easy to understand. I feel bad for Kayla and Mr. Gorge because they're going to have to start with a new person. But it has been very difficult at times going through the construction and COVID. But you helped tremendously and Chris too, just explaining things to us. Well, made it, made it a lot easier to, to deal with. And the public has been absolutely wonderful. Every time I, you know, am out and about in town, there's always people that come up and tell me that we're doing a great job or ask questions and, and I usually give you a little call or a text or Chris, a little call or a text so I can clarify things with people. But it's been, it's made a big difference just to have the two of you help.
Well, thank you, Don. Appreciate that. Good words. You know, I've done this before, so it gets easier, Don. I did this six years ago. You know, so my first tenure on the board, obviously, for 12 years, coming on in 2007. I really enjoyed those 12 years and then I decided not to run again. I'm thankful that, you know, I took a two-year break and then ran again for another term. This term has definitely been different, okay, serving in different capacities. Hopefully fellow board members and, and the public and administration appreciate the roles of board chairs, lead negotiators, negotiating committees. It's really been easy, honestly, the last four years because I haven't served in those kind of capacities and, and some of those other committee assignments. But as you get two new board members that come on and look at those committee assignments, you know, you, you, you take that into account where, where there are people that serve in capacities that are a fair amount of higher stress and, and higher connection. You know, with Alicia being board chair, it's quite often, there's many conversations that Chris runs behind the- that Chris runs behind the scenes and says, you know, talk to the entire board or committee or those kind of things. Alicia, I really have appreciated observing you grow in the board chair role the last couple of years. We've had a board that's been together for a while now. And I've just really appreciated the good relationships and experiences. We certainly have many talented and inspiring teachers and educators, which I know on a level now, after having two kids come through the school district and my daughter graduating in 2021, you have a little bit different perspective on how important those people are that help make our students who they are and what they are. We've had great administrative leadership that will continue, although certainly it's a big change with Michelle not having her at the board table. It's an outstanding opportunity for somebody to come into a stable district and to learn and grow from the good people we have here. Most of all, I just really want to thank the GSL committee or community for placing a high value on education. We've gotten tremendous public support. Sometimes they needed more convincing over the years. But that's, that's our job as board members, as administrators, to place that value on can we pass a levy referendum, which was a big, big struggle. And Chris and Michelle were huge parts of that back in those 2000, I don't know if it was 2008 or whenever we passed it for the first time, '07? Was that the first one? You know, I mean, that was just a struggle the district had. And since that's happened, we've continued to thrive in many other aspects. Hopefully that continues. I certainly am going to continue to be a friend of education at GSL. But I just thank everybody for a very rewarding 16 years on the board. So thank you.
Well, thank you both. We, I've personally enjoyed both of your time on the board. And so thank you again. Enjoy your time and your little bit of freedom. No more second Mondays of the month to come to your meetings. But, you know, if you ever want to sit in the audience and join us, we'll welcome you. But yes, so, but yes, thank you. I've learned a lot from both of you and I appreciate everything that you both have contributed to the board. So thank you. Are we, anybody else have anything to say?
I got to get to a counter.
Yes, I know. So that's why I'm like, can we, are we ready to, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Jason, a second by.
Oh, we should have let the last, we should have let Donna. Hey, well, we're good, all right.
Motion by Jason was a second by Donna to adjourn at 7:33. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.